Good morning. I'd like to call the Brookings County Commission meeting to order Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number three on the agenda is invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for item not listed. There is a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item, and any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We have one individual, Jeanette Gibbons. Would you like to come forward?
Good morning. Topic this morning is election integrity. Here we are, fresh out of the legislative session out in Pier, and we have a few months before we take another go at this. And as we all know, there's more and more information that keeps kind of slow-rolling out about things that happened, going back to the 2020 election, and even some eyebrow-raising concerning our 2022 primary and general election. So I know we all take this very seriously. I've probably sent this material to you before. This is an epilogue written by Captain Seth Keschel. He's a military person, and he's been hot on the trail of election integrity. So I'm just gonna read this opening paragraph, and then I gave you a list of ten points that he recommends as things that we can do to shape things up and get to true election integrity and restore the confidence of the people. So his opening paragraph, "Complaints are only useful if they're paired with solutions. We already know enough about 2020 to make a national case for decertification. In all truthfulness, we are only able to stay in our lanes," which is interestingly enough, enough, lesson two in my forthcoming book. "Staying in our lanes means to not get distracted with the final outcomes when there is still plenty of work to be done by teams, whether they are exposing fraud through analysis or canvassing, arguing in court, or contributing content through the new media. Keep on the pathway to fixing every problem you encounter. So no, we're not waiting on the news media, the mainstream media that we relied on all of our lives." We certainly learned about alternate media these last three years, and word is getting out, word has gotten out through the network over this time, starting with COVID, probably was the big kickoff. But paper that you have in your hands, the ten points that Seth Keschel recommends, which ones can we tackle here locally? I know we rely on the state legislature to pass bills of things you can and can't do, but what can we do right here in Brookings, South Dakota to make our elections better? One thing that I would like to propose as an agenda item would be to revisit the idea of precincts over voting centers. That would take away some of the need for the electronics, like the e-poll books. I think that would go a big step in helping to correct things and is an action item that could be taken here locally. So I would like to propose that be added as an agenda item, that be discussed and addressed. And is that a good idea, to go back to precincts? Maybe even smaller precincts, maybe even more than eight precincts. I know it's a problem getting volunteers, but if the precincts are smaller and there's your friends and neighbors coming there to vote with you, you have a chance to visit a little bit, and we take care of business. We'll do more to get volunteers. I mean, we have a good, strong group of patriots right here in Brookings that are willing to step up and do the work, and I think we can find more. One other thing I wanted to share is just a short excerpt from a Dr. Seuss book, Oh, The Places You'll Go, because I've had a chance to read this with my granddaughters. So one excerpt from that book, "You can get so confused that you'll start into race down long-wiggled roads at a breaknecking pace, and grind on for miles across weirdish-wild space headed, I fear, toward the most useless place, the waiting place. Waiting for a train to go, or a bus to come, or a plane to go, or the mail to come, or the rain to go, or the phone to ring, or the snow to snow, or waiting for a yes or no, or waiting for their hair to grow. Everyone is just waiting. Waiting for the fish to bite, or waiting for wind to fly a kite, or waiting for Friday night, or perhaps waiting for their Uncle Jake, or a pot to boil, or a bed or break, or a string of pearls, or a pair of pants, or a wig with curls, or another chance. Everyone is just waiting. No, that's not for you. Somehow you'll escape all that waiting and staying. You're off to great places. Today is your day. Your mountain is waiting, so get on your way." So I'm not waiting. I'm not waiting for everything to get better. I'm looking for ways that I can make things better every day. People that I meet, I can smile, I can help them, I can have a friendly word with them. There's things we can all do. I'm not asking you, I'm not telling you. I'm making my own choices, and that's the way that we change the world. Thank you.
Moving on, approval of the...
Don't move.
Motion a second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda items. Have motion approved, the approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of the human services report.
Motion approved.
I have a motion a second. Any additions or corrections here? Hearing none, call and roll, please.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to routine business, approval of claims. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion a second. Any additions, corrections here? Hearing none, call and roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move on to item number B, department head reports. 4-H Department.
Good morning.
Morning.
I submitted... Read it to you, but the last few months have been busy, and busy into the future as well, as we roll through our shooting sport program, which has concluded its match two, which was last week. The matches are the opportunity for 4-H members to submit a score that reaches a minimum qualification for participation in the state shoot, which takes place out in Pier, Fort Pier, the end of April. And there are three opportunities for that. Each of those scores vary a little bit by discipline, by, by style, especially in archery, and then as well by age. So we have three age groups, beginner, junior, senior. And as one would expect, our eight, nine, and 10-year-olds don't need to have the same qualifying score as our seniors that are 14 through 18. So they have just completed match two. They'll have one more opportunity if they have not yet met that minimum by April 15th. The state shoot has opened, as far as registration for that. Like I said, that takes place the end of April. They do that online, and is open for about a month, closes the day after match three ends, so on April 16th. I highlighted some of our match one accomplishments for kiddos and the match two things. Like I said, they were just submitted last week. So I'm not sure where our kids are falling, but I was talking with a volunteer yesterday who also is a dad, and have you got registered for the state shoot? Oh, she's not really interested this year. Last year, by this time, she'd qualified twice. This year, she's now shooting as well. She's a young archer who has just moved from the beginner age group to the junior age group, which increases the distance one is shooting to the target. So with a little age increase comes a little bit more of a challenge, and she was working through that. So still has opportunities to get registered if she so desires. Our 4-H group will be serving, or at least about 15 of us, will be serving the Sioux Valley Energy Meal in Volga on Monday, postponed from a couple weeks ago, as a opportunity to make a little money for summer trip reimbursement. The 4-H Leaders Association offers up to 50% of a refund to those that attend camp, conferences, kids that may be eligible to attend the National 4-H Shooting Sports Competition later on in June. Upon meeting the requirements set by the Leaders Association, they are eligible to apply and receive some funds back. So this will be an opportunity for those kids to meet one of those requirements while helping to earn some money as well. As we approach spring, I mean, the calendar said yesterday it was here. As we watch the snow melt and see the days of the calendar flip by, June 1st will be a big deadline. May 31st is a deadline for our 4-H members to be enrolled in order to participate in state-level events, state horse show, state fair, et cetera. And June 1 will be another deadline for those individuals that plan to exhibit animals throughout the year. They have to have those animals identified and into the 4-H online program by that June 1 deadline. This weekend, we're having our I Hate Winter Mixer with seven county area in Watertown, where we're gonna focus on some mental health. This time of the year can sometimes bring out the best and worst in that, as well as workforce prep and doing some mock job interviews and escape rooms that are based on solving clues about different jobs that are highlighted in our Operation Occupation course, which is an online curriculum that opened yesterday. It's, it's kind of a gaming. We have two components to this online workforce development program. The one is career conversations. Some numbers were highlighted in that, on that in this report as well, which is an opportunity for students and teachers to engage online, learning about careers and jobs that are being held by individuals locally in South Dakota. Things that are maybe unique to a certain area, or maybe something that one might not be considering as a career opportunity where they live because they're not familiar. And having some interviews that are conducted, most of them were conducted last year and recorded, and housed online on SDSU's Training House platform, where they're able to move through those and read the biography of each of those individual professionals that are featured within those different career clusters that are recognized by the CTE content standards. The Operation Occupation is a spin-off of that, doesn't use videos of necessarily local, although we did tap into the South Dakota Week at Work using a lot of the videos. They've already put together, which do highlight jobs in the South Dakota area, and they're just really short and complement the videos we put together nicely, as far as what surprises you about your job? What's your favorite part? What's the least favorite part? What education requirements are there? As well as just kind of a short glimpse into the day, a typical day in the life of said profession. And then an escape room platform that just allows some interaction between classmates, perhaps teamwork, problem-solving. We incorporated a component into our online course that allows teachers some access to identify what their students have completed and keep track a little bit if they've assigned something that they're actually completing that work. The Operation Occupation uses, like I said, some gaming concepts with earning badges and different pieces that indicate you've completed a section, and I think there's six sections, so earning all of the badges. And complementing those then are some longer podcasts that we've called All Ears for Careers, that are highlighting some South Dakota professionals and talking a little bit more conversationally with them about their jobs and, again, the things they like about it, the uniqueness of some of them. One of them is a voiceover artist out of Sioux Falls, who grew up in Millbank and is a teacher at Sioux Falls Roosevelt, and does this out of a little closet that he's turned into a sound booth in his home. So just kind of fun opportunities for careers using different talents and maybe not being quite as aware of those opportunities locally because they're not something that the job wanted's are featuring in the paper. So just a quick highlight as to some things that maybe weren't included in this report. Are there any questions for me?
Just like to thank all the volunteers to Shooting Sports for a long season and helping out.
It does get to be a long season. It's longer than the summer, and it's a weekly commitment. They had a weekend off this past weekend as the Joad Group, or Joad, I think, did that running shootout at the VCOIC. I was really grateful for the break. I think that they are very deserving, and they don't always like to take the break because now we're missing a weekend that we can help these kids improve their scores. And they do talk about those things and not wanting to short-change kids, but I was also really glad we didn't have to make a weather-related cancellation. So one way or the other, we might have had a break, but I echo those comments, Larry, and I'll share them. Thank you.
Misty?
Good morning. To you, the main thing right now, I have something coming up later on, on the agenda. Just wanted to let you know that I did put the claim in for the 2005 Sterling. It is completed. They say it's in working order. We are waiting until the weather gets a little nicer, maybe a little warmer, and then we wouldn't have to fight to start it so much. But I just wanted to bring your attention to that claim and ask if you had any questions on that claim. Okay? That is all I have.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Bob?
Good morning. I guess the biggest thing on that would be the radios. We've been researching the radios as of September 2023. All of our, any radios that go through the state radio channels are gonna be, have to be reprogrammed. The sheriff, I've been talking to them, and they have said that they've been updating theirs as they go along, so that one we'll keep an eye on and keep talking to Sioux Falls two-way. I've got three radios in my department that has to be reprogrammed, which is no, no big deal. We'll get those done. And the highway department's got several radios, but none of those use the state radio channels. They, they use analog, so any radio that's analog is not gonna be affected by the state radio changeover. It's only the dual bands. Like my office, I sit there and listen to the state troopers continuously to monitor I-29 and all the accidents. That radio would have to be updated, so it's not looking, looking too bad. And we've notified all the local fire departments. Typically, a local fire department might have one digital, two-digital radio for mutual aid through the state, but most of those are also analog. The ambulance services, they typically use digital only, and they've all been notified. We was scheduled to have a pipeline at Hazardous Material Safety Administration briefing today. They contacted me and Ms. Stepherson and requested that they push that date back to May, and so far, that's the new date. And then I also sent out the joint jurisdiction list of members and our, the way it's set up and everything that we did at the, at the meeting. We do apologize for not having it in your hands last commission meeting before they actually met, but they did meet the first Tuesday of this month, and everything went well. And on the backside of the page, you can see who the current appointments are. Those appointments, of course, on our side, came out of our existing planning and zoning meeting is why we didn't bring them to the board. And if it's something you want changed in the future, all you gotta do is let us know, and we'll, we'll be more than happy to change the way, the way it's done. I do realize you need to be notified, and that's, that's what this document here is. And the other letter would be the Federal Emergency Management Agency. They've got some questions on Brookings County Bruce Shop and Courthouse Fence, the scope of the work for hazardous mitigation tactics, and I think that that, the big thing there is just the pricing, the quotes, and things like that. That's not too big a deal. The East Shop, we've been discussing, and there was one, one good question asked, and that was, if it stays in the same parcel, do we have to jump through extra hoops, and it's not. If you stay in the same parcel, which the county highway shop is, all one large parcel, then you, it's not quite as bad. But if you're gonna build a new building, they still need the new scope of the work as, as described in the paperwork, size of the building and all that. And, you know, if you, if you're... So we're gonna have to get on top of that, and they, they keep contacting my office on that. March 22, which is tomorrow, we have a Madera Township diversion meeting at 10:30 in the morning. Yesterday, March 20th, I had a meeting with IB Drola, that's the, they own Buffalo Ridge, too, and they are looking at possibly repowering it in the next couple of years, which means, that was our biggest fear when they built these wind towers starting in 2007. What would happen? Would they just walk away from them? But in this case, and that's over 100 towers, probably 70-plus in Brookings County itself, they wanna come in and basically change out the heads, change out the blades, keep the, keep the tower base, keep the footprint, the whole nine yards. And so I think it's a win-win for everyone that they're doing that. Some of the things that we're looking for, looking at as a zoning office is, you know, they wanna change, like the length of the blades and stuff like that. So we've gotta stay sharp and make sure they still meet all of our setbacks that we require and things like that. But basically, what you're looking at is building permits for any of the, the changeovers on the, on the mechanisms, and maybe can some conditional use permits issued by the planning commission for like lay-down yards and stuff like that. And the most important thing is we gotta stay on top of them over the road situation. We, we have to, the county highway is gonna have, have to be crossed several times with them big humongous cranes, and so we'll, we'll make sure that the wind company contractor works with our highway superintendent to make sure those blacktop crossings are done properly. And then, of course, we also stay on top of it and make sure that the township road supervisors are in contact with the contractors to make sure the roads are put back. Typically, what you're gonna see in the construction of the wind towers is some damage to gravel roads, but they put them back to the original condition afterwards. So we'll stay on top of all of that. Monday, I have to put a late travel request in. There's a National Weather Service meeting down in Sioux Falls at the Big Sanford Training Center, and it's, it's an all-day deal. It's the National Weather Service bringing in all the county emergency managers, and usually they bring in someone from the federal side to talk about the future of the National Weather Service, and that's always a floating thing. March 29th next week, we've got a storm shelter meeting. We're gonna have to have a talk about the storm shelter that's in the basement of this building, and we'll go from there and let you know what happens there. And then the city of Brookings has a big tabletop exercise on March 29th that I'm gonna help facilitate. And that is all I have. Do you, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Finance Officer's Report.
Good morning. The Finance Officer's, Officer's Report for January and February. And then, any questions on those? Okay. Then we go on to the investment policy. We do the investment policy transfers yearly. This was created to equally distribute county money among the banks within the county. Each of them sends in their loan amount dollars that are loan amount dollars in the county. We take that percentage, and I take the total of the banks at the end of the year, use those percentages to divide it up. As you notice, most of the banks end up losing money now. It used to be, when we first started this, some would lose a little, some would gain a little. It's very hard, I think, for the smaller banks to compete with our largest bank with loan dollars. And so they are losing out a little bit that way. One way that they can do a little better as far as county money with escrows, people have their taxes included in their escrows. Those banks then send those payments into us. Normally, what we would do is just deposit that money right into our normal bank account with the, the largest bank. Some of those have started asking, can we have that money put into our, our bank account at their bank, which is what we used to do a long time ago before the investment policy. So we do do that for some of the banks, so they can retain some of the money that they have collected, which I think is only fair. Otherwise, the investment policy has been done for the year. Money's been transferred, and it's... and it's put away until next year. And that's all I've got as far as the finance report.
Any questions, Lori? No, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to regular business. Item A, Action Approved Resolution Number 23-15, a resolution for the establishment of certain motor vehicle fees. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
And a motion to second. Comments?
A House bill was passed, and Governor Noem signed to increase mailing fees for plates and tags. Most of the other counties are also incorporating this into their fees. Along with that is a $25 title fee that pertains to just titles coming from out of state. I checked around, and the majority of counties do charge the $25 through a resolution. There are a few counties who just do not do anything from out of state, so it's not a problem for them. I just would like to see Brookings County get that $25 also as a source of revenue, and so that's why I presented it.
Should we read through the resolution, or?
You don't have to read the resolution now. It's been presented in the packet.
All right. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Action Approved Agreement Number 23-20, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Sioux Valley Energy and Argo Township. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item C, Action Approved Agreement Number 23-21, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Sioux Valley Energy and Argo Township. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
And a motion to second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item D, Action Approved Agreement Number 23-22, a State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Agreement for Pocket Gopher Baiting Services. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Comments?
This is Pocket Gopher Baiting on the DOT right-ofaways. We do this every year. Brings us in some extra money. Just looking for your consent.
Okay. Any questions for Misty? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item E, Action of Surplus Asset Number 79265, an eight drawer card file to be sold via online auction. Motion, I need a motion to approve.
Motion approve.
Got it. Got a motion to second. Any comments?
This is an item, it's an eight drawer file cabinet that the highway department no longer needs. I did reach out to the rest of the departments within the county to see if anybody had a need for it. Nobody does have a need for it, so I would like the board to declare this item as surplus property, and we will try to sell it on the public surplus site at a future date.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item Number Nine, Commission Department Director's report.
The, the, or February is included as part of my staff report. One completed DAV van ride, a lot of that, you know, we had several scheduled due to weather, things got canceled or moved around, shifted, a couple of outreach events, two again were canceled, 43 appointments, and then the VSO did attend two conferences in February. The general fund surplus analysis information is included with my report for both January and February. Both of those months are above the 10-year averages of 22% and 14%, respectively. Those are the averages. We're at 24% and 18%. So, that information was included in my packet or in your packet with my staff report. We did get the notice for the Brookings County annual feed. The volunteer fire department is putting that on Tuesday, March 28. That's at the Fire Hall, the East Fire Hall on 20th Avenue, next to Burger King there, 5:30 social and 6:30 is the dinner. I also included in the packet the agenda for the upcoming SDACC Spring Workshop in April. You can see that it does get going at 8:30 that Wednesday morning on the 19th, and then wraps up about 3 o'clock or so the next day on Thursday, the 20th. I do have rooms for everyone out at the Ramkota for the nights of the 18th and the 19th out there. So, as it gets a little bit closer, you can let me know if you do indeed need a room. If you do, we have enough for everyone. Also with my report was the Taste of Brookings Annual Celebration. This is from the Chamber. You can kind of see the ticket costs and the details there. That's Thursday, April 6 is when that's coming up. It's up, Club 71 at the Dyke House Stadium. I'll need to know, I know in past years, what we've done is just gotten a table for Brookings County. I think they, seats eight. And then, I know we also get usually with our Chamber membership, a couple of tickets with that, then they take that, the cost of a couple tickets off the price of the table, I think, is how they do it. They make it good with us. So, if that's something you're interested in doing, I can work on filling up that table of eight. Mike's gone. April 6, anybody know this? Just a few weeks away, a couple of weeks away now. Okay.
I'll be available.
Does anybody else know they're planning on going? Larry? Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ryan, do you know if you're planning on going, or do you have something else already lined up?
Which one are we talking about? The meetings or the Taste of?
Taste of Brookings, the Chamber event on the 6th of April?
I haven't looked into it yet, so I'll have to let you know.
Okay. Other than that, I think the only thing I had were a couple of dates to remind you of. April 5, it's, I believe it's two weeks from tomorrow. We do have that commission work session. Well, it'll be, start at 8 o'clock in the morning, right next door in the community room. So, make sure you have that on your calendars. We have a commission meeting the day before April 4, and then that work session. Just, I plan on having it wrapped up for sure by noon, and that's even if it takes that long. So, we'll start at 8 and go and make sure we're wrapped up by noon that day. Equalization boards on the 11th, again, keep that in mind. That's kind of that off Tuesday in between a couple of regular commission meetings, and then, as I said, the workshop coming up later in April. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Stacy? Hearing none. Move on to the State's Attorney's report. Commissioner Vanderwald, Commissioner report.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. On Thursday, Brookings County and City Construction Upgrade, here in this room was very well attended. Weather wasn't great, but it's good to see a good crowd. The other item is on Wednesday, March 15. I attended the 10-county meeting in Bryant, my first one. Very, very interesting, and I'm glad I went, the rest of you.
Thank you. On the 9th, also attended the city construction meeting, and I think it's easy to understand that it, it also involves a lot of the county roads that are involved with that, so be aware. This summer, you're going to have to take some circuitous routes to get there, different roads to get there, and those will change as the construction season moves along, so be patient. 34th will also be tore up with a construction project from the city all the way out to the interchange. So, even though the interchange may be open, that 34th may be closed for part of the summer. So, things are going to look a little bit different this summer. 22nd Avenue in the city is going to be tore up, some other streets, so repaving. It's a very ambitious summer project. If the weather holds, hopefully they'll get everything done. So, again, there are some county roads that will be involved. Be careful if you're trying to take shortcuts across some of the gravel roads in the townships that they may not be serviceable for all that type of traffic. Take the detour routes if you can. 10-county meeting on the 15th, well-attended, good meeting again, great food. They always put on great food at these things for lunch. And yesterday, the Brookings Behavioral Health had their Zoom meeting for the board, discussed some things about the project, the building project, toured to Watertown to look at a facility up there, adding additional staff. They're really outgrowing their building fast. I can remember when we were down around 17 employees, and pretty soon, we're going to be up to 30-something. And additionally, with the growth in mental health services being required around the county and everywhere in the country, it's a massive, massive growth right now. I think Brookings County and this particular facility is really stepping up to the plate and helping out a lot. Their activities include the Boys and Girls Club, some of the diversity programs that Dan has been involved with, they're also involved with. They're going to be requiring more services from East Central or Brookings Behavioral Health. So, it's really kind of exciting to see all the things that are happening in that. And that's the end of my report.
Mr. Host?
Yeah. On March, I attended the 10-county meeting, my first one. It was very interesting. When I heard what they said, they did good on the road, so that's my report.
Commissioner Krogman?
Yes, not much. Hip surgery last Monday, and things are going well, but most of my meetings are at the end of the month, so I wasn't able to attend the 10-county because of that and that, but that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
On the 9th, I also, which entails some of the county roads near the town here, as Commissioner Bartley says, you got to watch if you're going to take shortcuts on some of these township gravels. As the weather hopefully gets better, those roads will be extremely soft, and it's probably not the best idea. Take the detours they have set up and stay to them. On the 15th, went to the 10-county meeting. According to legislators that were there, they said it went real well. They thanked all the senior leadership out there for helping along, and they said they really stepped up and made it good for the new legislators coming in. There was, I can't remember the exact number, but there was a first-time legislators out there. They thought it went quite well. On the 20th, yesterday, I attended the kickoff meeting for the Overpass startup, construction startup. They're tentatively going to start the end of the next week here on the 29th, weather permitting, and it's a tight schedule to meet the completion date, but they're getting set up, ready to go, and hopefully they can meet the completion date. That's all I have. Move on to Executive Session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses 1 and 4, personnel and contract negotiations. Do I have a motion to enter an executive session?
Move.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. We'll move into executive session shortly.
Ryan?